Call Charles M. Steen, Dylan Culver.
Suzanne Ann Bobb.
George Knoll.
Sean Harley.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Mulaney.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a 4-3, 2019 regular session.
I'm Ruth Toker, the Minister of April 3, 2019.
It's second. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Pose. One mistake? Citizens input. Since there's no citizens input, we'll move on to old business, attorney report.
Last time I talked about a photo release that I got that around, it's basically a permission slip, if you will, I sent that to the gal at the Red Door Marketing, sent a copy of this as well. Started work with this EMS fitness agreement and I know that Sarah had also put together some bylaws. Looks good. Haven't vetoed yet, but we'll be taking a look at those and I'm working again with Sarah on this fitness agreement to try to get that thing nailed down. It's only had to report, but I see that the next item is this resolution that I just got set together as well so I can be done with the report and move into that if you'd like.
Motion to accept attorney report.
I'm making motion to accept their attorney report.
Second, all in favor? Ms. Ferguson, aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion taken. Resolution 2019 dash four grant programs. Everybody got?
I made copies just to make sure that, because it was my fault, I attached the incorrect document when I sent out my first email. So I made copies just to make sure everybody's looking at what they need to be looking at, but I think you've seen a lot of this information before. The resolution, all it does is adopt by reference. The applications that March was put together and we took a look at those. And then there's guidelines, if you will, that are really become mandates. The application is filled out by a business owner or a business building owner, I should say downtown. Once they do that, if it's approved and accepted, then it becomes a binding contract. They're obligated to follow the parameters of the guidelines. And that's what you have there. I know that in your packets was an application that has already filled out. I think Dave and I think Mark can help out here if needed, but I think they just filled out an earlier version of that application. And that's not, that's not the finished product, that's not what is attached right now that you're looking at in that resolution. So in other words, ignore what you see that was completed and turned in. They're gonna have to at least replace the second page and sign that to make that effective.
I would like to see a difference between an existing business and a new business, requirements on the application. An existing business has history. They can give references, business references. A new business, it would need to be personal references, personal information. Personal social security number, credit history. I think credit history on both, you can get a business credit history, credit report. I think those are important. I think we want businesses that are paying their payroll taxes, that are paying their rent. I think that's the type of business we want. In some way, we need to find that out. I think there does, there needs to be more references, more research done. And on the business side, we're just handing them the money. There's no receipts, no work done. There's no receipts being turned in for the money. It's just they give us an estimate and we hand them $10,000.
Up to, it's a grant, I mean, that's more or less how you're looking at it, so.
And the building owner, they have to have estimates. Our licensed contractors, licensed contractors have to do the work. To me, that's more, I feel more comfortable with that than just somebody coming in saying, "I'm a business, I'd like this money." We need to have more documentation.
I definitely don't disagree on work documentation. I mean, references, I don't really see the point of, I'm not gonna be calling up these people's references.
I will, I almost called some today.
I mean, well, sure, but I mean, I don't, I don't, I tend not to trust references because they're gonna put down somebody that's gonna give them good reference. And so references are, credit history, totally, I mean, that's worth the effort, but I don't know. I mean, we, how unattractive do we have to make the application look before we start getting businesses to be turned away? Because I know several times I've stopped my own small business ideas because of the size of the, you know, application for some banks, bank loans. Like, this isn't worth it. I gotta, I'm gonna take a step back and reanalyze my focus. That's just coming from me, though, I'm pretty young, I haven't done this for many years, so.
Well, I agree, we should, we should have credit references. You know, people have filed bankruptcy here and they filed bankruptcy there, they moved around. So they come here and all of a sudden they're gonna take $10,000 of our dollars and then they're gonna file bankruptcy. I mean, there aren't things you can do about it. Now, one thing you said Suzanne, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about here, but I don't think you can request or require them to give you their social security number. I don't think you can do that, because the government can't do it no more legally. You don't have to give it anything, so.
Then they need to apply for a credit score or something.
Right, but there's certain things that we can't do, but then again, like Dylan said, you know, we're gonna make this so unattractive that people say, "Well, you know, I'd like to go," but our business is gonna...
I don't think three pages is unattractive.
It's not, but it is an incentive program. I mean, it's, you're looking at it two ways, we got a building down, we're trying to sell, I mean, we could end up giving somebody $15 million. And we're gonna, we're gonna look at less information on that than we're gonna get from somebody wanting $10,000.
Yeah.
So, and the whole thing with the social, I'm not sure, the only thing I'm gonna tell you, it has to be a business, so they're gonna give you their federal tax ID.
Right, they have a tax ID.
So I, I mean, you could, I guess unless we want a personal guarantee on this, that's the only way you're gonna be able to add somebody's name and S.O.S.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
And I don't have any answer, I mean, this is the reason, the whole reason we're doing this is to look forward. Don't worry about what's happening today, I mean, this is develop a program and I'll go forward from today. We may do all this work and never have another person apply for it, you may have 10 applications a year, I'm just saying, so.
But why does the building owner have to do the work first and turn in the receipts afterwards?
Because that's how they did it off the one I copied from Culver.
Then why does the business owner get the money?
Because the one I copied from Anderson, they didn't want that.
I would want that.
There's not, I mean, you can't, because they could use it for product, they could use, I mean, it's more or less just a grant for them to get started in their business. I, that side of it I look at and I guess I don't see the need, but to give it to a building owner, I mean, you're gonna want them to put it into their building downtown.
Mark, is there a red door, I'm seeing, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just, yeah, you want the building owner to put the money in the building, you want the business owner to put the money in the business. How do you know he put the money in the business? You know, he might get, you know, the idea is, we're gonna give you $10,000 to put $10,000 in the business. All we want is verification that you spent the $10,000 on the business, that's fair enough, right? Makes sense to me.
Well, I mean, I definitely, yeah, that's not a bad idea, you give them a time, would it be plausible to give them a time length after they completed their project to come up with the receipts? If not, you know, you know, that contract can be...
The one you require some kind of refund of the, you know, the funds or something, I mean, would that be too difficult to do as well? I mean, you can make it like the other one, they've got a year to complete the project and it shows what they have to do to qualify.
I would personally treat it like a construction loan. Here's your $10,000 credit and as you bring us the receipts, we'll write you a check. That's an easy way of doing it.
Kinda like that myself.
I'm listening to all this stuff.
It doesn't matter to me one way or another, I just need to know how to change this, because then it won't be a great program.
Well, right, yeah, I mean, once you get the extension that they have to provide receipts at that certain point, you know, then it's not really gonna be an incentive for people to start businesses here. It's gonna be more or less for, I mean, where do they get, gathering money in the first place? I mean, obviously they have enough money to try and get a rent for the building or something along those lines, but I don't know, maybe I'm overthinking it. I'm not too sure.
I don't think it's asking too much, everyone, to expect to see some sort of accountability for the dollars somehow. I really don't think that's too much to ask.
We did when we did our first project.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, and for the building, and you can do that, same thing on this other one. I mean, for the building one, they've gotta provide, obviously, more or less an update of the project. You can make them supply pictures, that's what this one says for the one, they could bring you all their invoices. At the end, you can make, make something like that. Like I said, this was all plagiarized, I, you're doing exactly what you need to do, because I can't, all I could do was find all the information and compile what I could.
If you're going in for a bank loan, you'd have to give all kinds of information. And that's, you know, to pay the money back. Here, we're just handing them a check for $10,000, I think they can provide us some information.
Some, but you also look at a grant, I mean, you don't have to put tons of, so that's what I'm saying. It's not a bank loan, I don't know if you want to treat it like that, because you're gonna have people... But the invoice, I see what you're saying, so if they can, because they give you a sheet, you know what, we spent $25,000, and I get that. So at the end, why don't you just provide us with all your, your information, what you did, and I, it's part of getting that, I can see that. You're gonna run into then, I mean, your only question you're gonna ask, so is this an upfront grant? Are you gonna pay it back as they turn stuff in? Something you guys need to ask yourself so we can add, how to add that, what?
I've not read here longer than when they, towns got any grants or anything, and I've never read one. So what, when you're applying for a grant, like we are at Bell Building, what do you have, what do you have to give them?
That's why we got these loans out.
The writers.
Sell out, they owe money on us.
But even with a grant, if you think about it, after you, after you get a grant, you've got a time period, I don't know how long, so long after, but they have to, to more or less give the information on how it's gone, what they've done, so I mean, that would be virtually the same thing, I can see that.
Could you business property?
I don't know how you would lean, it's not really a paper, I mean, that's, you would have to answer that, but.
Then why, why don't you cut the link and then?
Because the problem, I mean, you look at this anyway.
$10,000, they put $5,000 in a pocket to rest and say they spent $10,000.
Right.
No proof, then.
Some of this is just gonna be risk, you know what, Jamie and I had this talk the other day, somebody could buy that building for $5 million, they could move in today, we give them all sorts of crap. Any year, they're bankrupt and there's nothing, I mean, you don't know as well, unless you get something signed by a personal guarantee, these corporations, they're done once they're gone. It's just a risk, a date. So I mean, that's why when you go through the application process, maybe there's somewhere in there, you sit down with these people and you interview, I don't know, I mean, that's what, you're doing exactly what you need to do.
Face to face before I accept a grant.
Yeah, I mean, as much as I'd like to see grants being mailed here, I don't, I don't see it being very effective right now with our businesses. I mean, we do have our, we're spread pretty thin financially as well. You know, I wouldn't, I don't know, I mean, I want accountability, maybe for a new business grant, for new business, you know, owners, kind of status or something, qualify that as a grant, but I don't know. I'm kinda on board with these guys right now, having some kind of accountability for both of them, at least for the time being.
I feel better with the building one, because there is some, there's some receipts needed, it has to be licensed contractor.
There is a clear difference, as I read through, I agree with Suzanne, there's a clear difference between both of those.
On the business side, there's nothing required.
I don't know, I mean, well, I guess the biggest important part here is trying to work with the law house, I'm like, seeing what we're gonna do with them, considering they already have an application here.
The application is not completed, it should not have come to the console. It should have been as far as it's not complete.
Okay, so what's the next step for helping them? Because clearly they're, they're reaching out so we can, we can help them. We can't just dump them off, say, "Hey, this is still your problem," you know?
They, okay, the business, they should be able to secure traditional financing, that's part of what is in here. So if they're really desperate, they should be able to get a line of credit from the bank.
Sure, but that's also a lot lengthy process than what reception was given here. So I mean.
We haven't passed the resolution, we should not be promising anything to anyone.
We're not promising anything, but we're not, we're not also, you know, reassuring them that we're just gonna dump them, hey, we're working on this.
I'm not saying we're dumping them, I'm saying they have to.
Well, it's, you know, yeah, I'm okay, I'll notify them that we need to work, work on it or something along those, I think that's fair to them, that they need to be at least notified.
And I'm not worried about that application, right, wait a second, you can talk about that in a minute. I guess more talk about this resolution, what we need to get put into it, so that the next meeting we can, next meeting, meeting after that, whenever, we can, and don't think today, think, like I said, this is also down the road.
We can't be, I'm trying to make this fit in one business, this has to be like down the road for any business that comes in. And to me, the requirements for a new business are going very different than the requirements for an existing business that's expanding. Existing business has a track record, they have suppliers they work with, there should be tax records, making sure they're paying their payroll taxes, making sure they're paying their rent on time. I mean, there's a track record there that should be researched and looked into, because we did say the applications are researched on a case by case basis, so that does need to be done. Now, a new business is going to be different, because they are not going to have a track record. So we are gonna have to do some tracking on individuals that are putting a new business together. So I think the requirements would be different.
I mean, that's how, I mean, Suzanne and I are on board if having a workshop, we need to try and figure this, you know, I don't know. I mean, we need something, but I'm kinda on board with her, is, you know, existing and new businesses are kinda two different pieces.
Sure, boss Randy.
Yeah, we've got a lot more to do than just say let's pass the resolution 2019 dash four. We may end up hurting ourselves on that, so let's have a workshop. Because, again, and I think everybody knows that, if your business has been here and you wanna move and you want to expand or whatever, yeah, you've got a record. We can, you know, but I keep thinking, Joe Smo coming in here and we don't know what he's got.
Right.
And we don't know what he's gonna do, but you're taking a risk, you take a risk, like Mark said, we're selling buildings, we're taking a risk, we're taking a risk with everything, but we don't have to forcibly take that risk. We can approach it, we'll send backing and keep ourselves from getting...
An educated risk or how do you want to say it?
Right, right, an educated risk, yeah.
Okay, that's Sean, what's up, Derek?
What do you think?
Well, I agree with the others on most everything. As far as existing businesses go, my opinion is, I don't think we need to overcomplicate the wheel here, I mean, they've got a proven track record in town. We pretty much, it's a small enough town, we pretty much know everybody, I don't think we need to get all crazy with existing businesses that are already here. I do agree with new businesses, that we probably need to have more information on them, like Suzanne said, you know, we probably should take a look at whether they're paying their payroll taxes and they're paying their, that kind of stuff. Again, for both programs, I feel there needs to be accountability, one there is, but the other one is kinda lacking.
Well, and this is gonna be a new, you guys are gonna be, like I said, there weren't many of these, I think I found two in the state that were released online, Terre Haute and Anderson, that did a business. Now, there were facade and that type of thing, but the actual business side of it, there weren't many.
I like the direction we're going as for the town, and I appreciate your work, Mark, but I agree, I would like to see us try to hash some of the stuff out in a workshop, with you, including you, Mark, if you could find the time. But I guess that's where I'm at, is try to figure a time for a workshop if we can all be here.
Okay, it looks like the consensus is they want a workshop before we move on to this, I'm gonna send a workshop.
I shouldn't say, just what we need, it's just like, how you gonna say that?
First and 15th.
I'm pretty much open next week.
What's next Monday, I'd like for, like, you know?
No.
The 29th and 26th?
26th.
I'm in Georgia.
What the heck?
Well, we do, pretty much stopgap this month.
I don't know why, when you said you was gonna travel.
The 24th?
24th.
24th?
Won't be able to turn.
24th?
Next week's probably about, the only shot I've got, and even if you don't make it, so.
I can't next week. Friday's my only break.
This Friday?
No, 26th.
26th, I'm about like her, it's about my, close to my only day.
You guys had sent up a workshop, May 1st, that we were gonna go over some budget items? Because I'm not gonna be ready, I apologize, but since I'm gonna be out of town, if you wanna take that workshop and then we can schedule the budget.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like a win-win.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah, because we were gonna have a workshop anyhow, so.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock?
He said after, workshop after.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, after the morning. But if you wanna do it before, I mean, it's either way. Just give me a time, so I can post it.
6:30?
Hour before? I mean, I'm sure we're gonna be talking about it via email before that, before that anyway.
Okay, May 1st, 6:30.
And if you guys can pencil in the date, maybe 15th.
15th?
Lisa, did you say 15th at 6:30 also, or?
If that's what you guys decide that you wanna do, 6:30 is fine, 15th, but.
Okay. 6:30, 15th.
Yeah, and that's for, like, the large items that we were talking about, the large budget items that are coming up this year.
Everybody first or the one after the meeting on the first day?
I didn't even think about not being here first.
So on 15th, is that the 6:32?
Excuse me?
15th to 6:32?
No, yeah, 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 we'll film 6:30.
I'll let everybody know now, I will try my best to make those, but if it's possible, I may not be able to.
Yeah, our jobs now, it's bringing in some hours.
My next two months are tough.
Well, if you wanna make it for after the meeting, too, you can do that, but you gotta let me know.
Later in the evening, sometimes better, but we'll try, we'll try, I think.
It probably won't take very long.
Just leave where they're at now, if we see a problem between now and the week, we'll see what happens.
Well, you gotta let me know before Monday.
Okay, moving on to other old business, does anybody have anything else? Update that, what we just talked about in workshop?
Yeah, we'll do more, talk about the thing we did get tonight, that meeting dispatch that we did with.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'll let you talk about it.
We attended the meeting at the Marsh County Dispatch Center last week, George and I and Lisa, we're on the Bronda Davis. There's a lot of confusion county-wide about the charges on this, dispatching fees for the different entities in the county. There was a lot of discussion, I'm not gonna get too in-depth with that, but I took away three key notes that stood out to me from the meeting. One was a consensus that there's a lack of accurate accountability of the dispatched calls by department and the dispatch center's ability to break out that data when inquired upon. In my opinion, to bill an outside entity, it is crucial to be able to provide accurate data to those entities and in a timely manner when requested. I think that's something that needs to be pushed to them sternly. And the second thing I noticed was the way the mutual aid calls are currently being charged is actually backwards in everybody else's opinion as well. It needs to be corrected, the responding departments currently are being charged dispatch fees to respond to another department or areas, area of responsibility. It shouldn't be just the other way around, I think that there's a pretty good consensus that that's gonna be addressed. I know George sits on this board, so that's why I'm kind of pushing towards him. The third thing, the formula that their sheriff is using to formulate this billing, is causing a great deal of concern for everybody involved. There was several discussions about different ways of doing it, why they're doing it the way they're doing it, so on and so forth. One thing that kinda came away from it was, there seemed to be a period of consensus from everybody, public and everybody that was at that meeting, that kind of prefer a flat fee charge somehow, either by the population of the entity or a charge similar to like the drainage taxes on your property taxes somehow to fund the dispatch center. We gotta have, we can't afford to have dispatchers ourself here, we can't afford that. But we need to find a better way of trying to see that they're funded properly. And it's more equitable and accountable to the different towns and townships. So I think those are the three things, George and I'd like, from my perspective, to be pushed and stressed to them, that they need to get straightened out. And then there was some talk of, the town currently has not paid their bill. And there was some talk of paying a partial invoice until they can straighten some of this stuff out.
And we're agreed.
And I think I would be in favor of paying a partial invoice at this time, just to try to keep them running. They have bills to pay too, just like we do. But I'm not interested in paying the whole invoice yet, because they just don't have the accountability that I feel good about it, so. George, I, Tony, you threw a number out, I don't remember what it was at this time.
It's 10 grams, now the 14.
I guess that's the rest of the cow, I mean, I'm not opposed to paying a part of our invoice, whatever that figures.
It was 88.
8500 last year.
8500 last year, I knew it was gonna be a percentage increase.
That's only police, though.
Right.
And now it's 14,000.
Just police?
Just police.
And you guys were considering paying 10s?
I'd go back to the eight. That improves that you spent, that you...
But we can, net $10,000, we can go back and pay, some of, some of that could be the township money. But we can, net ten thousand dollars, we can go back and pay some, some of that could be the township money, some of that could be the fire EMS money.
Oh, so it's not a full-time from the town.
You'd really, you know, if we, if we round that off, you know, if we include what the townships owe and what the fire and police owe, by the time you got down to it, we've had to owe less than eight thousand, you know, to, in police. And then we just need, I've been working with Cory, trying to get something figured out. Because what if, what if they come back next year and say, oh, we need six hundred thousand? We're in a deficit of six hundred thousand to run the dispatch center, you know, what do we do then?
Well, that, that's go back to my thought.
Then we hire our own at that price. Cory, what'd you have back there?
So, just going through our radio log from last year, I come up with how many times we did assists? And it was over three hundred and fifty-nine. Now, that was assists for everything that we did outside of town, so I'd have to go, and if I type in, you have to do a, I'd have to break it down. I can tell you, anywhere between fifty-two to three hundred and some calls, somewhere near how many times we assisted in Marco County. And that, it's gotta be up there a ways, it's a few hundred.
We're built, we're drilled for those calls.
Yeah, so, my, what I proposed to do is deduct a fee from our service, see what I'm saying?
Believe me, it was a very heated discussion by all of the people. And as me sitting on the board, I will take my brunt of it, because nobody could come up with a formula that is totally fair, let's put it that way. Because it would, this, let's say, I'm gonna use our population, Tynor, looking at, Polk Township. Their flat fee for a population would be twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Right, that's crazy. I, I, I propose to the police commissioner in our last, in last meeting, that we basically deduct a fee from our service to them.
We brought that up.
Um, and I, I think it can be substantial.
So that's why, that's why we're really, we're having a meeting, we're going, everybody's supposed to come home. We are getting complete sheets on everything, bro down.
If we're charged, what is it, almost seven dollars?
Seven dollars.
Ten, seven, twenty.
So, I, I, I think at any time when we respond to a call for assistance, I, it has to be more than seven dollars. It would have to be, just for.
As Mr. Police Commissioner, Mark.
What, the problem with, then we turn around and, and charge them when we do a service for them, it's not gonna eventually help us any, because that's just gonna, that's gonna still create that deficit for the county. They're just gonna come back and say, well, we've got a deficit that just needs to be absorbed. And so, instead of seven dollars a call, now it's eleven dollars a call.
And we're only paying half of it.
Well, I say, it's like a never, you know, it's just like.
We're not paying a hundred percent.
Mark?
Even at the rate we're at now, it is not one hundred percent.
I understand, I understand that. I'm just saying, the way the county has it constructed right now, it just seems like there's no ceiling for them.
There's not.
Because they could just pass it on, you're right.
There's no cash at all.
So, are they charging like county, like Green Township, Walnut Township? Well, how are they doing that? Because those people already pay.
They pay county taxes.
Yeah, it'd be like double taxation.
The townships pay for fire EMS only. The city pays for, the city police.
Okay, no, that's what I mean, so they don't charge, like, Green Township, let them give them a check for county police.
Our beef, our beef was is when there's a call, if you call the county and he's called out, he's the first one responding. We get charged for that call, and it should be the county's responsibility, and they should be the ones taking that charge. We shouldn't get charged.
Well, I question, so. Back up, back up. When they're dispatched, first of all, through nine-one-one, it's not a chargeable call.
Right.
It's only after you get on scene and you then use the service.
Well, you think, you don't know.
In any case, even after you're on scene, you're gonna make that call.
That invoice that I saw was a joke.
Yeah, so, so anyway, it was brought up in good, faint standing, we threw the number out of ten grand. You guys can vote what you want to pay. You wanna pay the eight thousand we paid last year, or you wanna go with the ten grand? I feel we, we paid last year, and everybody else has paid. We're one of the only ones that hasn't paid, everybody else has paid their, the pads and us are the only ones out in Paterville.
Do you really feel though, that we owe more than eight thousand? Do you really feel that we owe them ten thousand?
Well, they're kind of a two-way street.
Yes.
I mean, because you, you balked too much, and they can look at you and say, a dispatch center's gonna cost you three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
That's why they needed some kind of a cap on things.
But we're getting charged.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with Mark. Where's, where's it stopped?
No, no, I think, and I think he's right, when he's saying, pay something, and then you're working on trying to come up with the.
Would it be better to come up with a plan and try and get our own? Because there is no, there's no vision for a, a season.
I don't know why, he kept saying, the city of Plymouth was paying a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Police officers, twenty-four seven, seven days a week.
You need to also try to get another dispatch somewhere, like Fulton County, or Bremen, or Stark County, or something like that. That was another option.
And have Rockland out too.
Right, well, yeah. Anyway, I guess state police's dispatch. Doesn't have to be an account.
We have to pay something, it's a bill, you know, we owe it. And we don't want a reputation of not paying our bills. It's how much we're gonna pay. I don't think we need to overpay them. I think we need to be conservative, until they prove exactly what we owe them, and if it's more, we'll make it up. You know, we're not gonna beat them out of it.
I, I, I do, Randy, I have a big problem with their accountability.
Well, let's make them pay.
There was so much information being thrown around, it was just, I felt they were just pulling down the air. I mean, there was nothing, they can't even go back into their system and pull out accurate data, and that's just wrong.
And they can't tell us why they are in a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deficit.
Well, so let's, let's give them something, George. That's fine, I just threw that ten thousand dollar number out.
George?
But I can't do it.
Did, did we go into two thousand and eighteen in agreement with the county? Well, then we pay them.
Yeah, we have to pay them.
I mean, that's, that's the ethical thing to do, then ditch afterwards.
Pay up the whole thing, is what you're saying?
If we went in that, that agreement, we owe them the money, and it's not right not to pay them the money.
Pay them exactly what they're asking for, and then fight with over.
Well, you're not gonna get your money back, you're just gonna have to, that's just the battle. Concentrate on the war.
Like I said, we, the committee, the, yeah, the board agreed on a partial payment until it got figured out. Not our board.
My, my biggest issue the other night with Mark was the fact that, I, I don't think their numbers are accurate. I really believe we're overcharged. And I, I'm not comfortable paying the whole thing, because I think it's overcharged, and they can't account for it.
Now, you know, like I said, the committee agreed on taking a partial payment, doesn't mean next month they're not gonna say, now we'll let the rest of it. But they agreed to do that till we get this figured out.
Let's give them a partial payment. Yeah, motion that.
I make a motion, make a motion that we pay a partial payment.
I threw a ten thousand dollars to them.
I'd still like to say, because I'd like to see if they've proved that we've.
No, let me do A and let me pay the township's portion. And don't come out to a round table.
Make a motion that we pay our A and pay the township's portion.
And our fire EMS, you know.
Also. There's a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor of signature, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, anything else?
I have one thing, real quick, I apologize, I'm sorry, but I, okay, so we had three, we have three VZA cases this month coming up. We charge no fees for a VZA application, and the county charges seventy-five dollars for a VZA application. I spent, on all three of them, I probably spent almost eighty, eighty dollars in postage alone. So, because you have to go three hundred feet and send a letter to all their neighbors and all of that stuff. We brought it up before, about charging a fee on a VZA application, we've kind of let it go. I've had a lot come in, you know, and now I'm just asking if you wanna change it, or you wanna keep paying the fees? Paying for the postage and the paper and the time and.
What's the, what's the average per, you said you did three of them, and it's eighty dollars, or each one's an eighty?
Well, one of them was twenty-five, one of them was like thirty dollars in postage, and the other one was like another thirty, you know, so. If it's in town, you're hitting neighbors, you know what I mean? Like, you know, so, if it's out in the country, you gotta spread it, because of the lot sizes. So, I'm, I'm not saying that we have to charge it, you know, but the county charges seventy-five dollars for a VZA application. I checked with Chuck, and also, you guys are paying Chuck to help us on the VZA, you're paying him to help us on the plane commission.
Let's just mirror the county fee then.
I'm just, I'm asking you what you wanna do.
Marry the county fee.
I'll make a motion that we charge a fee for VZA applications equal to the amount of the counties, I believe, of seventy-five dollars.
Second.
I was waiting on that one. All in favor of marrying the VZA application of seventy dollars?
Is that okay? Quick question, is, the land use and development codes, we're gonna find that stuff. Does, what does it say about imposing or charging fees?
I don't have it on there, I can't click, I'll have to look it up.
Well, it's not something you need, taking it right in the second, but it's.
I guess I could.
It may require a change in that ordinance, or change in the land use development code, depending on what that does say. My memory says it, it does say something about that you can't charge a fee, but I don't know if it's ever been set or established. But, but like, it needs to get, need to look at it.
Maybe I'd stop the motion.
Right, I'm just saying, don't leave the motion, then we need to follow through, and make sure that we don't need to change the land use and development code.
Here's a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. Hey, it cost me a hundred dollars for a missions trip application, if they don't, well, may I still pay the hundred bucks? All right, any other old business?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Our business directory that Carrie is working on. She is putting out some media information, trying to get businesses to respond, so this is some, which is gonna be, now, this is in color, I have it black and white there, so. This is some information she's going to be putting out, trying to get businesses, get them, get them. And I think she may be talking to you, Lisa, a little bit about something here in the office.
Oh, this is about getting their, registering their business names for the science.
George is a business director.
Yeah, the director. Jordan, sorry.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Nice.
This is what she's working on right now.
At least it's simple.
I thought, this was in color, it was really cute. It's pretty good, I mean, she's working on that. That's all I had there.
All right, thank you. New business, wastewater for Worthland Trail. Who was the top, Mike or Jamie?
I guess there was some thought last time about this. I wasn't at the meeting, so I guess that's where this kind of started from. Mike brought me a lot of information, so I'll let him kind of go on with it. I think you were sent quite a bit of this information already, so hopefully he does kind of look at it.
Uh, with this last fall, Mr. Ed Marcus acquired a property, and his septic didn't pass the inspection, so he wasn't able to get a loan for the property, so he inquired about having the town sewer run so he could tie onto. And I found a lot of documentation dated back to nineteen ninety-seven with this issue. Back then, the issue was, the property he actually bought, the septic was leaking raw sewage on top of the ground near one of the neighboring properties, near their well. So the Marshall County Health Board got involved back then, and they sent a letter to, I believe it was Mr. Halsberg at the time who owned the property, mandating that he tie onto the town sewer and have his old septic cleaned out and demolished. Well, the problem at the time, there was no existing town sewer for him to tie on, so the Board of Health gave a permit for him to fix his septic system at the time, but they also required that, they wanted the town to run a sewer, and then, at that time, according to the town ordinances, everybody would have a set timeframe, and they would be mandated to tie on to the town sewer. Well, nobody ran a sewer back then, so it was kind of all left hanging. Well, we've ran a sewer, and according to our ordinances, a private property can use and maintain a private septic system until such time that a town sewer line is available. Well, the town sewer line's available now. According to our ordinance, each property should be notified by a certified letter that the sewer is available, and then they have ninety days to tie on to our line. My recommendation, I know nobody wants to give away money, but these, these residents are gonna have to, I mean, they're gonna have to tie on to our lines, so there would be a tap fee. They gotta have their old septic tank pumped out and clean, you know, so you're gonna acquire money there. They're gonna have the fee of running the new line, tying on, there's gotta be a water meter put on to all the private wells, so we can monitor the flows, we know how much to charge them. And, I mean, all the, they're, they're gonna have an estimated twenty-five-hundred dollars expenses in doing all this. It's my recommendation, we waive the tap fee to help them out. You know, that's a big burden to throw on somebody all at once, but that, that's kind of where we're at on that.
The, the other thing we found back, like, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven, this project was done twice. We found prints two, two different times, I think one was in ninety, and another ninety-seven, or ninety, whatever.
Blueprints for all this, but nobody ever moved the ball forward.
This has been paid to be done, you know, engineered everything, just never got done. So, last year we finally did do it, now we've kind of found all this other information now too.
So, six houses, is that what?
I, I believe that's what it is. Five or six.
So, right now, Ed and, is Jay Stoffer, you said, is hooking up?
He's already.
We have two on, and, no, there's three and four Harshburgers. Maybe there are four on?
Harshburgers.
Towne's Old House? Stoffer?
Richie and Stoffer's are the ones on.
On sewers?
Yeah.
Towne's Old House is on?
Which one?
That first one on the south.
First one.
Big house.
From the left?
Yeah, that's tied in.
Odell's?
Yeah.
Stoffers, Millers, and then the one across the street. We just put the hydrant in?
The one across, the, the one on the north side is Stoffers, they're still on a private well, or a private septic, I believe. I think there's ones, five, Ebys, Harshburgers, Stivers, across the street, and then Ed.
Ebys is not tied in either.
But guess what they're trying to tell you, you're gonna have, there's a lot of people that are gonna be in here.
The sixth one would be the one west of.
For, for Free to Live? Yeah, they'd have to tie it in. Well, they can tie it in the one in front, you think?
That one, dead end, down by Dollar General, and I don't think there's enough fault to reach that one.
That one, we talked about a solution for that, they might have to jet it in, they might actually have to get a pump.
A lift station there?
Not a lift station, they, just a pump for them to, to send the two of us.
Well, I know we discussed this last time, when Ed was in here, and we had talked about, I know we told him no, it's just the person coming in. But we forced, pretty much forced the sewer on by following our own ordinances.
The Marshall County Health Board was the one that forced, they wanted a sewer there. We finally did what we were asked, twenty-two years later. But now, according to our ordinances, since it's there, they have to tie on.
Yeah, if I, if I remember right too, when we annexed a property, we're supposed to take the utilities to it, and we're supposed to do that within three years, I believe. So, I don't know when it was annexed, but it's been annexed ever since I've been here.
That's why I said, the ball was dropped on that, until we have an emergency now, that we have to come up with.
Yeah.
We did our hardest part already, we, we ran the line, it's there.
These people are still on their own well, though, correct, for fresh water?
I believe.
Yeah.
All of those are.
Do, does the town have freshwater lines out there in some of these areas?
They do, but not to those areas.
All the way through.
It goes to the hydrant.
The water things are different. Sewer, they have to water.
I'm just asking one question, what, what services we have out there? Because in my mind, if it's annexed, we don't have our utilities out there, period.
We have water.
We have water to a certain point, it's not all the way around.
Yeah, correct.
If we have to do it, we can do it. Kind of gets my D inside.
Because that was that, that was that repair we had to do two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah.
Running the corner?
Yeah.
And we went out and we ended up putting a hydrant in halfway through.
And the biggest thing that prompted this issue in the past was to prevent groundwater contamination.
Correct.
If you dump raw sewage by your neighbor's well, there's a good chance somebody's gonna get sick.
Correct. I feel we dropped the ball. We had it. The taps are there, they will put in when they, when these guys put in the taps are there.
They're there.
We charge the hook to it, or we say, there you go.
I guess in this case, in this particular case, some of this new information brought to light. I feel that, well, so there, I mean, there'll be documentation of that.
And they'll have to, Chuck will have, and then they'll have to come and get a horn, right? And then, and then they'll have to get somebody to put that on for them. So, I mean, they're, they're gonna have to do all of that.
Are we gonna do the ninety days as the states?
Well, I think we should, yeah, that's exactly it.
I think we need to follow our ordinances.
Yeah.
Mind you.
So there's a motion to waive the tap fees on Woodland Trail, and go with, make sure we follow our town ordinance.
Check out the one oh eight, sewers and wastewater discharge ordinance.
Is there, uh, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carried. Wow, I think we need one more.
Well, that was for everyone except Ed, right?
That's how we should state it.
He's still gotta get bored, I wanted to say that. He's still gotta...
I wanted to say that.
Two man separate.
That's not expensive.
Only the board.
No, I don't think it's that expensive at all. I, I sat out the guesty back at all.
Depends if you got it or not, yes.
Yeah. Hey, the bank's got money.
All right, flowers, gardening, landscaping, I threw this stuff out to Lisa. About flowers uptown, our pots and plants, I mean, we've done it. Um, then comes the garden. Out back.
Does we have anybody to do the garden?
Yes, yes.
You wanna do it?
No.
We're not gonna go on that one. Who's gonna do it? Kansas, and, uh...
Maybe not enough of us church has, has graciously volunteered to do it, but we, I told them that we would supply the materials.
That's fine.
Just like you did for Dustin's.
We're all for it. We did for Dustin's water.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have, we've always done that, we've always provided seed packets or, or, you know, I think the tomato plants were the only things that they bought as plants. You know what I mean? Because they take a little longer to grow, but, um, and the pastor Mary that is at the church, she is, uh, her missions group has decided that they would take it over. But I would like to get the sign redone, so if anybody knows an artist, apparently somebody ran it over or something. It is, it is demolished. So...
Take it to the school.
Say, talk to the art department at school.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we're, we're, first one, first one. Somebody's gotta make the motion to support, to...
Yes.
And what's the cap, what money, what did we have last year?
Um, last year it was a thousand dollars for both.
For the flowers?
For both, the garden and the...
Okay.
It cost me six hundred dollars, eh, more than that, to do just the planters, the thirteen planters, that's not including the mums in the fall. Now, I never went beyond a thousand dollars, but that's not money they have to take it on it.
Is there a motion, a second, to go ahead and do the garden and the flowers?
I'll make that motion, it was a cap of a thousand dollars for both projects.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Now, the problem with planters, who's taking care of ours?
I do.
You do that?
Well, Dave helps me, you know, but, um, he and he helps me plan on the...
Didn't you have Abe Newton or somebody pull water last year?
Oh.
The park unit, so...
Somebody, yeah.
Landscaping of this building, that has been an issue for, God, Suzanne and I talked about it, Mark talked about it. It's...
We've, we've even got plans to have it done.
Hmm?
We've got plans.
I've got some in my files.
I was gonna say, they're...
Been for years.
Let's get it done.
Does it involve putting the sidewalks in the right place?
Do we wanna hotline game? Now, now, let's, now let's back up again, because we also, who's gonna take care of it? I am not a plant person whatsoever. So for me to come in here and trim your hedges, might as well cut them off.
I'd have to look at it, I, I can't remember what, so, there's trees out front, there's, there's things like that.
Prices gave us a price at Lincoln's, like, fifty-five-hundred dollars at one time, that's been three or four years.
Yeah, I don't need the prices.
Come in and do it. Freeze it. But it's just, you know, we're...
Whatever we do, let's make it low maintenance.
Yeah.
Right. River Rock and Garden knows. River Rock and Garden knows. I'm sorry. We can get colored.
So, we wanna move on this, so how are we gonna do this, people? We gotta throw another... How are we gonna do it? Everybody puts in, you know, water, sewer, all this, who's coming out of town? How are we gonna do this? Because you, I mean, you're gonna be five, six thousand dollars.
All good, easy.
Might as well pull out the old plan, put an estimate?
Yeah, could, could re, uh, submit it to prices and see what they say, because...
Let's do that.
Things have went up, I, I, you know, I mean, some trees, a hundred dollars for a tree is a cheap tree anymore.
And do we want the whole plan, or just pieces of it, and then add to it as we get...
If you do that plan, you've got it.
I, it's someplace in my files, I...
Uh, yeah.
You got it? Okay, let's do that.
Let's do that, let's get it...
Let's get it re, let's take it to prices and get it redone.
I'd like to see the sidewalks moved.
I know you would.
We just do that. Hey, watch what I'm thinking.
Right there's your concrete, man.
I just put them where I stole, pulled them one week ago.
They're wrong.
Pick it up and move it. All right, well, we're good on those three, thinking of this downtown grad applications, well, that's on hold. Yeah. Um, appointment of an economic development director. All right. You wanna talk on this? You wanna talk on this? You wanna talk on this? Good. Mark, throw out your ideas on, as a redevelopment. And Randy, you talk about it, an appointment of economic development director.
Basically, we're, the way I understand this, we're, it's, it's, we're talking about a liaison between us and, uh, economic development, whatever. It's not really a, it's not gonna be a paid position or anything, but it's, it's gonna be someone that can be kind of the voice, so whoever's in charge, uh, could take it to economic development and talk to them and, and, you know, it's just, we, we need somebody, and, and personally, I'd like to see Mark Penn will do this, but he's been doing it, I don't know how long, but it, it would make it, when he's contacting some business, they say, well, who are you? You go, I'm the economic development director. That sounds a little more professional than, I'm the guy that kind of helps the town out once in a while, I, I run the remote little hardware. I mean, you know, we want it, we want it to sound professional, and Mark has put a lot into this. I, I, I think his knowledge and, and everything, and his commitment has proven that, that he's real interested in this, and again, it's just a liaison, like being liaison to the, everything else. So, I would like to see it done, and, and again, I would like to see Mark nominated for this and, and give it to him.
My question, are there any other contenders? Anybody else willing to be economic director?
The pay sucks.
For, uh, yeah, that's a better question, I guess, I guess, is there anybody else wanting to be an economic director? In general, I mean, yeah.
What was the job description?
I mean...
What's the liability if he commits the town decision?
Well, no, and he won't be able to commit the town, and I've, I've talked with Mark about this a little bit, and Walkerton does have a similar position, and, and he's kind of a jack-of-all-trades, a little different than what Mark would be doing, but... This position is something that could be created, and it would really be probably an annual appointment by the executive. We've got, in our current ordinances, that the executive has the authority to create standing committees. Um, and this would be something that we would kind of follow along those lines, or would be included in, in that kind of a, uh, arena, if you will. But this would be a two-step process, one would be just to create the position, all right? And then the second would be to fill the position. And, and the filling the position would probably be something that I would imagine you'd wanna do that on an annual basis, because it, it, it may not be marked forever, it may not be marked the first year or the third year, but it's something that would, it would be a position to be filled, and it wouldn't always necessarily be marked, you may get tired of doing this stuff, or maybe...
Well, he's gonna work this into a full-time, as he said, Walkerton, as you know, he did get, you may find the perfect person, and you end up creating a full-time position.
Yeah.
I don't have that, I've got a full-time job.
The first step again is creating the position, and, and, and speaking with him, it would be an unpaid position, and we also would not have, and this person, whoever it would be, doesn't have any authority to bind the town. It's really a, it's really a, a function that they would be in charge of gathering information and making a lot of calls, knocking on doors, talking with people, but ultimately, decisions would always rest still with the council. So do we need to develop any kind of resolution or anything? Yes.
Hmm? Create?
Yes.
Decision.
And to decide if you, you know, if you wanna appoint him for three years, you could do that, but I, again, it's, it's up to you how you wanna do that, but that's... The first objective here is to create the position.
Position.
That's it.
Is that considered what you just said about, you know, to make that committee? Would that be the same as a committee, that I could just say, I'll make the position of economic development director?
It's really not a committee, when you read that, when you read that ordinance, really not a committee, as, as, I would see this to be more of a position. Um, and so I just, I think maybe a resolution to just say, we're creating this position, and these are the responsibilities, and some of the highlights and expectations and responsibilities of this position. Create it and then fill it. So our first step, make a official?
Just to make a motion to make a resolution, and then everybody throw out what they think the responsibilities are by going through our book.
I'll make a motion to create a resolution to create the position of economic director, one of the town parties.
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
If it's okay with you folks, I can put a resolution together, at least in a draft form, and, and get it to you, just so you can look and see what it says, and you wanna add to it, you wanna take away, or change this or that?
That's fine. I think that'd be very helpful.
That'd be a place to start.
Okay.
Anything else before we go to department heads?
I mentioned I will be gone next week, with the walking ability training initiative in Georgia, just outside of Atlanta. And that is a county program, we won a grant to do this. So, I'm learning about walking trails and paths, and I hope we can bring some information back to the county.
Good deal.
Thank you. Can drive it or fly it?
Fly. Eight o'clock, twenty-one.
Walking, that's the whole idea.
Is it walking?
Holy change. All right, let's move on to department heads, police department.
So you should have my report, um, I don't really have a whole lot. Sean took the one thing I was gonna talk about, the only other thing I really have was, um, um, we just had our deer graduation.
There, I heard you.
So, if I didn't get everybody's name on the mailing list, I'm gonna go ahead and formally invite anybody, it's May sixteenth, the Deer Banquet at Christo's, at six-thirty, and the cost is whatever you wanna donate. That's, that's all I have, and I, when he comes back Monday, he goes into the school, it's all set. Monday.
I would, uh, while we've got Cory on the spot here a little bit, I'd like to entertain the council's thoughts about, uh, on his monthly reports. So I guess, in my own mind, I would like to see him add a couple of, uh, reporting areas, so to speak, uh, around the things that we've been talking about, all these off-road vehicles and that, just, just kind of get a feel of if he's having problems with, uh, you know, fines or anything like that, or if he's pulling people over with problems, just so we get an idea of what this ordinance and everything is kind of creating for the town.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'd like to see you add those to each of the officers, that they could report when they stop, go on and walk, you know, like you have your other criteria on your reports.
So just basically, anytime we stop, a violation for...
A violation for speeding.
Off-road vehicle.
Off-road vehicle.
Off-road vehicle violation.
Off-road cars.
Yeah, you mean recreational vehicles.
Recreational vehicles, yep.
I, I can tell you right now, it's, it's zero, that's personal.
I, I think we need to see that.
But I mean, that's, it's true.
Freedom.
No, it says zero, we haven't stopped any.
We got questions. What's in? Hey, like the new car?
Yes, yes. Everything except, other than the, the computer, um, needs to be programmed and, um, my car's, and, um, the, the light bar went out, the back went out, so you can't, so it's waiting for the light, had to order a new bar for lights in the back, because you can't see anything in the back of that, but there's lights in it, but where they've got the factory tent, that's where the lights are, so without that bottom light bar, it's, you can't even see it till you write it up on it. And we put that in ourselves with the extra that we had upstairs, but it was old and it finally gave way.
Anybody got questions other than that, first Cory? Thank you, uh, utilities.
Uh, you have my report, a couple of things, West E Cor, we've been working out there, it's been kind of slow-going, it's a mess, Randy can attest to that.
I tell you what, these guys, every day I know they go one more out, but they, they've hit a lot of problems, or it's not been a piece of cake. But, you know, they're, they're doing a good job, at least it's getting done, and, uh, and it's gonna take maybe a little longer than what you thought. But you did what you did.
No, sure handed. Um, one of the problems we ran into, um, the bank started washing out on us, so we had, we had to tear off some curbs, so we'll have to get that replaced, I think it's around two hundred feet, so I don't know if we'll get in the more of that as we go, we're, we're in the deepest spot right now, so it shouldn't start getting better once we get around the corner. Um, but anyway, that curb, we'll have to have that prior to place before we pave it, so, feel something coming up. Uh, the other thing I found out, wayfinding signs are done, so we're trying to figure out when, when we can get them in, um, it's not a big deal, we just gotta get a, locate everything, we gotta call and locate, so we gotta mark everything, so I, whenever I get time, I'll, I'll work on that. Uh, the other thing is, trying to replace Harry. I've interviewed, I got a couple of good potentials, um, I've got a second interview tomorrow, so I'm hoping to maybe hire somebody real quick here. Um, one of the things I just wanna think about too, and I need to look into this more, but, um, when we do Bud, just maybe we'll look at if, if we need to put somebody else on too. Because I'm, I'm just, I'm shorthanded right now, and I know it kind of goes up and down, but we've got a lot more going on than we've had in a long time, so... And the other thing is, it just takes a while to train somebody, you know, if somebody gets hers, which happened, I don't have somebody just to throw into that spot, you know? And it's, I, I know it doesn't happen often, but we, we just got a lot of, we're doing a lot of projects in the house now, and...
Just from, just looking in from the outside, you guys are very... just from looking in from the outside, you guys are very good at multitasking here. A lot more than we've ever been. And then again, we still have a bunch of guys that have a big heart there that, you know, they.
If they didn't, they didn't, you wouldn't be here, I'm telling you.
So there's always something to do, you know? I mean, you talk about the second person. I guarantee you find something more there. There's no, I mean, there's not going to be what they call, there's always dead time in anything, but there's always something to do. So I would think real hard on that. That's just me, with all the projects and we can't, Jamie hates to tell us no. We've already found that out.
Well, you know, if you went out, I've got them out training at the wastewater or, you know, doing something in the water, just to have another set of eyes. If one of these guys gets hurt, sick, whatever, just, we can move people around where we need to.
Cross-training is key.
Yeah, and, you know, when you can find people that are willing to do that and want to learn, you know, if it's hard, you know, and finding the right people to fill these jobs because a lot of the guys, when we come in every day, we don't know what we're doing. We have a plan and most of the time, you just sort out the window and we're running six different directions, so it's just the way it is.
I'll tell you, you found two good candidates, Jamie, are better than most of us, because we're having a hard time finding one.
And I keep hearing that. And, you know, I found two right now and I think they'd both be a good fit. I don't know, even if I offered them the job, I don't know if they would take it or not, you know, for what we pay, because they're making more, but there, you know, there's some benefits working here too, so that's just something they have to weigh out, but right now, you know, I'm looking at one for sure, but most of the time, you don't get really good qualified candidates either.
Do you think it's probable that you'd be able to hire this individual?
I don't know. Possibly.
I think you ought to try to go ahead. Even, we don't know for sure with Josh, how long he's going to be out and you guys, just one more thing happens, you know, how much can handful people do?
You're going into your key season too. You're trying to get a lot of stuff done.
Right.
That's my thoughts, is they're shorthanded now, plus they're down on.
And there's ways to pay for this, for payroll and stuff like that without.
Well, you know, if I did hire two full-time now, I probably wouldn't bring them part-time at this point, you know?
Which has its own benefits, so. Go for it.
Yeah.
I mean, I can offer them, see what happens.
I say use your best judgment.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'd say if you could get two good ones, use your judgment. You'll go back in, or at least, I will.
I don't want to see you working some of these guys completely, you know, to, they just can't go anywhere.
Well, and I can fill them anywhere. My problem is I'm not able to do some of the things I need to do because I'm, you see me.
I, and listen to people, I'm telling you, I'm not, Jamie has anything, but I told him at the desk that you're going to get high blood pressure if you keep doing this. I mean, and that's, you know, Jamie will do anything that needs to be done. If it's him out there and shovel, shoveling while somebody goes eats lunch, I saw him out there doing that. And, you know, we've got a good supervisor. We've not had this in the past, but we've got one now, but if you need help, get some help. Don't kill the guys you've got. Don't kill yourself. Get some help. And hire them in part-time and let them see, you know, like, not everybody wants to do construction type work or picking up limbs or.
The two I have now, I won't get them part-time.
Well, I'd get them then.
So. That's what I need to know.
Doesn't work out with these two, you gotta keep looking. That's why I like Suzanne, so use your judgment.
Okay. Well, then if I.
You guys are getting a lot of.
I got some testing to do and if they both look good, I'll offer them both the job.
Get that in the backpack, make a blower, we can take her all downtown sidewalks.
In my house.
Okay, anything else for Jamie, Joe, Mike? Good, thanks. Fire, we have a report. Mark?
Yeah, our report. As of last month, we did get that old fire truck. It's sitting out here. It's going to be going in here shortly to be start working on it, get it going, hopefully by the parade, so. It does run. We did have it running, so that's a plus. Just got to get some brakes on it. That'd be good. U-forms came in today as well, so I know we talked about that a month or two ago, but those are in today, so. That's about it.
Do you need anything?
I always need something. That was a bad question.
They've been doing some great training too. They had a house out here in the country. They could do some training and going in and rescuing people. And I saw guys sliding down fire hoses and down ladders upside down and it, we have a well-trained fire department.
Didn't think I could still do that, did you?
I was shocked.
Mark, I do have something here I want to share with you. I don't want to make it public necessarily at this time, but I do want you to.
You want to do that now or later?
I do want you to just take this and look at it and follow up.
We'll talk to you after that, after this. You and Suzanne and Corey and. You don't want to do that now, but after.
Thanks, Mark. Sarah, you're up.
Okay, as Derek has said, I did submit a draft of the bylaws. You guys take a look at them. Lisa has my email. Please let me know if you guys have any questions or concerns. I can explain some of the more medical jargon if necessary. You guys have my council report, please excuse the February, I should say March, on the month-to-date. Argus one is down now. There is a coolant leak somewhere. I took it over to Littlehead Matt this morning, so we will find out that. I did meet with a Stryker representative. And for a new cot, this was, he had quoted me for a stretcher that was pretty much like a showroom stretcher. Had been used, but it was a discounted price because they take it and do demos with it. So for what we would need and including, and I have a breakdown if you guys all want to see it or need a copy. It would be a total of twenty thousand thirty-four dollars, and that's for the cot and the mount. The mount that we currently have is not.
Compatible.
It could be, but it's not National Highway Association approved. So like if we, you know, worst-case scenario, the ammo clips, that cot's coming down on everybody. The bracket that would be installed would be, they're there. They're going to be hanging from the ceiling, but they're up there and they're safe and then we're safe because we're not getting it with that huge heavy piece of machinery. In the visit from the Stryker guy, we were, I was informed that the Life Pack twelve's that we currently have will no longer be serviced come December twenty nineteen. And that is a defibrillator, that is a monitor for cardiac activity, pulse oximeter. It's a big piece of equipment. We use every single call. And each of those are twenty-five thousand dollars. We have two of them. And if we were to trade in our Life Pack twelve's by the end of the year, we would get a five thousand dollar credit per unit. So for just the Life Packs, the grand total, if we were to trade in prior to the end of the year, would be fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That's on top of the cot. I did have him quote me some payment options for those Life Packs. I know Dylan had mentioned a few meetings ago about some like different websites that might be willing to pay more than maybe five thousand dollars for a Life Pack, like secondary, you know, other countries and things like that that may be less developed, but we might look into that option. I'll have to get with him and see what our options are, but again, I have the possibility too of payments for twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight or sixty months. So I have those, that information as well, if that was an option. I do know in our donations budget, we have about seventy thousand dollars and that's where the cot was going to come from and we can move around some money as needed, but it's the Life Packs that were a surprise to me. I guess I don't have any direction right now with that huge amount of money. I can.
I think you need to go ahead with the cot.
Yes.
I do too.
Yes.
I mean, that's been in your five-year plan. That's what I'm going to take care of.
I'm just thinking.
The other two, I think we need to look at some options.
The only thing on this water leak.
It's what?
Are your water leak going to end with one? There's a chance it could be a blown head gasket. So it's going to be expensive.
Yes.
That's something else.
Might not be fifty-two thousand dollars.
You know, it's like you inherited a nightmare. And, but, you know, it's just something we need to kind of keep in mind that if she comes back and says this was not just a water leak, it's major, we're going to have to the way you did it for this too.
Well, my experience with diesels and the head gaskets, generally, you can get them done with south of seventy-five hundred dollars generally, if the head's not cracked.
I don't have the budget in front of me. I apologize. I brought everything else, but it, but we have some areas that we might be able to pull from. Especially we, for once, under staff, might actually come in favor here because we budgeted for quite a few EMTs and paid and you pull from that little section in the budget, so.
I think we need to deal with one thing in first, I agree with it. Let's get the cot and get it done.
Yeah, we got to get the cot in.
Then we'll deal with these defibrillators. On down the road here.
Five or six months, we've got to really put into a panic on this.
Right, I wanted to bring to your attention, because it was a surprise for me that, and it's not just a, we're not selling them anymore, it is we're not servicing them after December. That's what was like.
You might as well figure another hundred thousand for regulars and next year and a half too.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Sarah to purchase the Stryker cot and the mount that goes with it.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second, to go ahead and get the Stryker cot with, now, is there any other discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Sarah, for all of your work. It's been tremendous.
Having this. How many years have we asked for this?
Couple. All right.
Yes, that's very well done too.
It's a very rough draft though.
Well, you got to start somewhere and I've been down this road with the police department.
I said you have any concerns. My phone number, I'm.
Nothing else for department heads? Motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to accept all department head reports.
Second.
Ah, she beat you. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. I got one thing before claims. American Legion came to me on the street and I forgot it last meeting. During the festival, they would like to know, they want to put on a car show. And if it gets big enough, they would like to be able to shut down Indian Avenue between First and Yerick. It affects no driveways. Because the park was parked behind and Gene doesn't drive, so it would be just that section between First and Yerick. You get what I'm saying?
During what festival?
During the town festival, kickoff festival.
They want to do, they want to have a car show. I know, but they don't want to do it in the park?
No, we want to do it right over here.
I can't answer that. Today was the first time he talked to me.
I don't know.
Maybe I misinterpreted him. I took it he wanted to do it in the park.
Well, hey, Richard came to me. They have a meeting tomorrow and I attend their meeting, so, I mean, I can read it over to him and get.
That was brought to me about closing the street down and I said I'd bring it up to the council, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I'm going to see.
I think they'd better they had it in the park just because that's good people. Oh, jeez.
Okay, Dylan, good enough. Claims. You need this?
I got it. Yours can share, so.
Yeah, you should.
Cheaper than a conference.
See that box? Anyone else want to go in there?
Yep, I'm going to hit you with that.
Okay, that's what we got.
The total docket is seventy-six thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. The top five claims are as follows. Payroll number seven at thirty-seven thousand one hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Federal Reserve at seven thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Jones Huff Jones at three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents. Perk at three thousand one hundred and one dollars and twenty-four cents. Rochester Cement Products at two thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The top five claims total fifty-four thousand three hundred dollars and seventy-three cents and represents seventy-nine percent of the total docket. It was a very small docket.
Yeah, but how'd he get to the top of it?
Because it was a very, it was a very small docket. When's the last time you saw a seventy-six thousand dollar docket?
Never.
Yeah.
Our motion to accept claims?
I move to accept claims four oh two through four forty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on the claims?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, motion carried, adjournment. Make a motion to adjourn.
We need holstering, do we?
We need holstering. Discussion? All in favor of the adjournment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carried.